Hello, I'm Hannah with the Lethbridge Transparency Council and I'm here interviewing Michael Petracchis, a city council candidate for the municipal elections. Welcome, Michael.
Hello Hannah, thank you and I'm really honored to be here and thank you for the opportunity.
Absolutely. So, starting off, what do you think needs improvement in the processes of city council and administration? And how do you plan to make those improvements?
Thank you. Well, in the name of one of my teachers, "true knowledge is understanding the extent of one's own ignorance." Socrates said that. And what I believe that points to is that no matter how much we think we know, we're always maximum at 1%. So our availability for optimizing the system that we use to be a cohesive community, an educated community and an engaged community are so vast that there are just so many ways to do better what we have been doing and to build upon what we've been doing. Not to say that what we've been doing is is wrong. Just yes, so much room for growth. And sorry, what was the question?
So just talking about what you think needs improvement in the processes of city council and administration.
Yeah, so in that regards, I see everything needing or benefiting from improvement. And I systematically go through that with my campaign proposition, which I'd love to get into to any degree. But from a general standpoint, it has to do with how we can inspire our community to be to feel more empowered to engage in the political arena. In other words, so as to make sure that the political arena is not so overly intellectualized, that people think they need to get a five-year degree just to vote. In other words, I believe that the purpose of a city council should be to increase the education and the intellectual capacity of the populace so that the age of voting is actually younger and younger because the children are able to feel like they have immense value for us to be bestowed upon. Yeah, so that's just one of the things.
Yeah, there's certainly a lot to be said about accessibility and making sure that people that are voting feel that what council is doing is accessible and they can understand that. So there's certainly a lot to be said there. So what recommendations would you make to engage more people in the city's municipal development plan and process?
So my entire campaign is not your normal campaign specifically because the municipal elections for me have merged with an aspect of my life where I've been preparing to present my life's work, which has everything to do with world peace and what that looks like on a local level in regards to what is the epitome of thinking globally and acting locally. So my life's work has been about the art and science of world peace architecture, which means that in scientific terms, I'm using this platform to stand in front of my community and share that I have discovered a scientifically irrefutable formula for world peace. Now, this changes the whole game a little bit specifically because what is available for us now is to reconsider everything we've been doing and everything we've been thinking. Because this scientific breakthrough doesn't just have to do with politics, it has to do with how we think, how we perceive, how we interact. It is a spiritual awakening and it is a scientific breakthrough, which is actually the merging of what is called conciliance, meaning when an academic field reaches a discovery that can be proven from multiple scientific fields, however unrelatable they previously seem to be. So when I say that this is about a scientific discovery, we have essentially been operating at 1% capacity. And what we have now is an availability to access 100% capacity. I look at it akin as to the idea of a jet increasing speed and then suddenly reaching immense resistance moments before passing the sound barrier. Essentially, humanity is about to pass the sound barrier. And what I'm saying is just a glimpse and maybe a foreshadowing of that.
Absolutely. So what do you think the top three issues are in the community and what are your plans to address them?
So I recall what I was going to point to what I previously said was, in essence, what we're talking about is a leap in human consciousness. The next evolutionary phase is actually our cognitive processing capacity for pattern recognition. Beautiful that you would have the puzzle pieces in the background. So we're talking about a spiritual revolution that has to do with awakening of what love actually is. And what I mean by that is up until now, most people have thought of it as some artistic poetic kind of fuzzy interpersonal type of dynamic. But it's actually a quantum technology which upgrades our pattern recognition algorithm, our ability to make sense of things. And so it's to take advantage of opportunities that are before us. So in other words, up until now, you could define how society works and perceives as being through the lens of scarcity consciousness. In other words, we've been traumatized through thousands of years of so much suffering, war, poverty, confusion, bad health, depression, anxiety, that we've been operating from what is described as fear consciousness, which essentially collapses our cognitive capacity. That's why when we're scared and feeling defensive, we're not able to be very compassionate in our communications with our relationships. So what that means is that everything that we're looking at doing and wanting to do in our community is constantly being limited by a scarcity mentality budget. In other words, we want to do so much, but all we have is crumbs to deal with. And so if we were to look at society or nations as corporations or businesses, what we're looking at is like Canada as a corporation, which it is, working for how many years with a bankrupt economic policy? We are literally a bankrupt corporation. So who are we taking economic notes from? In other words, we're being told how to be and how to operate and how to collaborate by a system that employs hundreds of economic PhDs who maintain a bankrupt corporation or business. Now, any bank would have already liquidated our assets and redistributed among the shareholders of the bank if there was a union. And that's what I propose that we do. We liquidate our assets and redistribute our capacity to reimagine what an actual sustainable economic business model looks like on a local and global level. And what that means is re-establishing a collective commons again, which takes into consideration three major policies. One is transparency, the other one is accountability, and the other one is open collaboration. And what that means is that we begin immediately installing all the most advanced democratization technologies that exist so that we can navigate from a place of redesigning everything. And that means blockchain technologies such as online voting, just to begin establishing how we honor our community's intelligence. Because our community had so much feedback, but we're saying, okay, we're gonna do all this, but we have to do it on a shoestring budget. We don't need to work with a shoestring budget. We're billion dollars in debt. We might as well go trillion dollars in debt because at least then we won't be trying to sustain poverty. So my proposition is, how much does it cost to buy the end of money?
That's a very deep question. I'm sure we can have a lot of conversations about that. So a lot of what you were talking about talked about the way that business works in society nowadays. So kind of what is your plan to create environment for business in Lethbridge specifically?
So for me, I think about business not in terms of just entrepreneurialism or businesses that employ. I think in terms of input and output. Our goal is to create surplus. So an efficient system has greater output than it does input. Otherwise, it's operating at bankruptcy levels. So all business is actually to do with creativity and innovation so as to optimize our efficiency and effectiveness of doing things, whether that is producing resources such as energy or food or whether it's about how to optimize the system for optimizing the creatives and the innovators, AKA the entrepreneurs and artists. So one of my main focus points is a system that does that. And that means that from a perspective of business, we have massive innovation to do. And that means that it can happen really easily as well and really cooperatively. So for example, right now, there's three things I would propose. One is that we begin hosting world peace dialogue summits as a town hall 2.0 system, meaning that we want to maximize public engagement, we want to maximize voter turnout, and we want to maximize relevance for the public. In other words, we want to portray relevance for the public's interactions and engagement. Otherwise, what are we doing? So the world peace dialogue summits are focused on two major themes. One is identifying who the community considers to be some of the wisest people in our town and asking them what their greatest wisdom is. Let's call this 101 for obvious things to do in times of crisis. Number two is what I describe as the ultimate cooperative model for leveraging our collaborative capacity. In other words, every major business that exists in Lethbridge is faced with something that seems too complex for most people to interact with, but is like something that's inevitably creeping into everyone's lives. And that is to do with globalization and predatory capitalism. Meaning that the monopolization in private industry is taking over everything and is not responsible in the same way that our governments are supposed to be responsible for being fully transparent and even ethical, let alone cooperative. So what I mean by that is at minimum, big business through big box stores is extracting all the value of our local communities and leaving everyone to deal with almost a desert of ideas within a desert marketplace. Walmart is probably the ideal example of that. So what that means is that through a system called scarcity economics, we are then sold the cheapest products, the cheapest quality products for maximized profit for these corporations. And now, and simultaneously putting everyone out of work and left to compete with a giant that has a trillion-dollar marketing budget. So what our option is, is to out-compete predatory capitalism on a local level by forming a cooperative. And that means a single question. Would you like to see everyone in Lethbridge invited to sincerely consider purchasing one product from one company that everyone in Lethbridge has equal shares in? And what that means now is, of course, it's going to be ethically manufactured. It's going to be sustainably manufactured and it's going to be competitively priced. Why? Because businesses have been taking advantage of what is called scales of economy of scales. And every company has always wanted to have maximum market value, market inclusion. In other words, every company wants every customer. So this is reverse engineering the idea of business so as to leverage everyone's purchasing power while minimizing our waste, which is like waste in marketing costs, waste in gross domestic happiness because we're employing people in China at slave wages as opposed to keeping people employed in Lethbridge. The quality of business culture, because now we're not working for some unknown entity from across the world that represents a billionaire families. We have like an actual community cooperative that is like a workers cooperative. And so the product that we agreed to purchase actually doesn't even matter really. It just has to be some decent product that everyone's already buying. So as to first experience the impact that that community decision would have on in terms of how efficient we are with our own purchasing power. That's one long form answer.
Yes, very, very long form, but that's okay. So looking back on the process level, in our most recent municipal development plan, what decisions did you agree with and what decisions did you disagree with?
To be perfectly honest, all I've looked at is the overview, the highlights, I mean. And my understanding is that the general premise is solid. I mean, in terms of what is being focused on, in terms of how to upgrade our community and how to focus on some of the major issues. You know, I I just looked at it today and I don't even recall much information regarding evidence-based emergency protocols in terms of how we're dealing with the pandemic. But everyone is very familiar with the issues that our community faces. All it would take would be a very basic poll to recognize that the top 15 issues are agreed upon as being the top 15 issues. So your question was, what do I think about them? I think that we would be able to come to very precise resolutions of the major issues that our community faces if we weren't pretending like we only had breadcrumbs to work with. In other words, if we're going to look at the opioid crisis and the addiction crisis, rehabilitation isn't a new thing. And cross multidisciplinary partnerships and cross-cultural partnerships are not a new thing either. There are people all over the world who are setting in motion absolutely transformative rehabilitation protocols to deal with this on a systemic or holistic level. But if we are tying the arms of our social workers behind their backs saying that there's just not enough money to go around, you're going to have to cut all these, make all these shortcuts, then they're simply not going to be able to complete the task. So if we want to recognize, if we want to resolve a lot of these issues, having a list of priorities with a true data-backed analysis, a meta-analysis of what the benefits are on an economic level and on a gross domestic happiness level regarding ending, for example, the opioid crisis and the crisis that our downtown areas face. If we don't actually understand what the full spectrum of benefits are going to be, we're going to continue to think that it doesn't deserve all the finance that we could possibly throw at it. And that just means in terms of financing systematic full spectrum or integrated protocols, not just throw money at it, of course. Throw money at the integrative approach to resolving issues. So I would say that we know what the issues are and when we begin to implement systems such as those that I propose, which optimize our community's cohesiveness, like City Hall 2.0 technology, AKA the World Peace Dialogue Summits, we will begin to see that not only are the divisive issues not as divisive as we thought they were, but there are actually solutions that we could truly unite on that everyone would say, of course, we should try this before trying that. And that's all that's community what's the word? Unanimous decision-making or consensus processes are, that's how they can be done. One of my favorite quotes is from an indigenous leaders and it goes, "When my people gather in council, we talk until the truth is self-evident." And so to set up community-based interactions which allow us to sit in dialogue until everyone's voice is heard, as if that's like the goal, not like, sorry, we don't have time for everyone's voice to hear, we only have so much time. The purpose of gathering is to make sure that everyone's voice is heard because it's like going to court and not hearing all the evidence. We are the evidence of what's going on, of why certain things don't work, of why certain things could work. And everyone's got to be heard out. And then until we do, we haven't truly honored the intellectual capacity of our community.
Certainly, one of those hot-button issues right now that a lot of people are hearing is talking about transit and transportation. Do you have any ideas about how to prioritize transportation in Lethbridge in the future?
Yes, free transport for everyone because obviously we can and the value is immense. I mean, it's immense, not just to illuminate that our community's economic model is creating like the most bare minimum form of surplus. In other words, we don't have to pay to get to work. It's like pay to get to work. Can a work justify paying us to get there? It's like, it's the most ridiculous thing. And that's just one version, but the actual cost of transport is like bare minimum in terms of efficiency and quality of, quality of bus stops, quality of the circuit that the bus takes, quality of the employment, the employment packages offered to the employees from the bus drivers. I'm looking at the community as a corporation, as a business. A business, a successful business offers a really good incentive package to its staff. So as our business increases in success, our membership benefits increases because we're shareholders and we're shareholders of our community business, Lethbridge. So as our benefits increases, increase, you can imagine things like access to healthcare increasing, our access to a high quality of life just regarding the civil engineering of our community, our access to transportation and telecommunications technologies. Imagine having free wifi everywhere. And I would propose that we raise the bar on what we are expecting from our from the output of our collaborative systems, which is our community, is that we also anticipate that free food be also part of that membership benefits of a successful company. And if we're not getting free food, in other words, you work at a restaurant, right? And they charge you for your lunch. That is exactly the model that we're working at. We're working at a restaurant and the restaurant is charging us for our coffee. So now, now we're talking about, let's just increase, let's just expand into the topic of the pandemic. Why not? We're keeping it light. So the idea is that this is a pandemic of hysterical proportions and the sky is falling because the data. Well, for anyone who has done a meta-analysis on the data, they very quickly come to understand that Well, for anyone who has done a meta analysis on the data, they very quickly come to understand that if. Fifty percent of casualty, if the casualty rate of dropped to fifty percent, for example, not cases. Cases isn't a casualty rate, hospitalizations and death is a casualty rate. If they, if those analytics were to drop by fifty percent, would we consider it to be a pandemic? To close the entire global economy around, obviously not. Ninety six percent of the ICU uh hospitalizations and deaths. Had to do with people. Having coma core comorbidities, meaning that the doctor was saying you have multiple issues. That if not kept in check, you could die. So ninety six percent of the casualties ICU and deaths from this pandemic. Were because of people who were extremely unhealthy. Now, if we're going to de- uh design our response to the to the pandemic based on that. That is not an adequate, an accurate way to assess. The risk factor that the general population faces. So what would we recommended with that is to. Through these World Peace Summits. We will ensure that every single dialogue that needs to be happened, happens from a public and academic. Scrutinization process, meaning that every issue that we have, we're going to bring in. Two of the best arguments from all sides of the uh discussion. So that we can prove that it's not unscientific to question the science. Questioning the science is the scientific method. Which means that, for example, when talking about blanket statements that lock up everyone. Into some sort of prison camps, by the way, lockdown is a prison term. Then we should at minimum invite those scientists who hold contrary opinions. So that our public can be informed by the science. And that means that blanket blanket mitigation processes as well as focused mitigation processes. And I'll just uh wrap around where I started. The majority of the hu- human population is being faced with immunocompromised. Immunological compromise issues because we're all being poisoned by the food. That we're being sold by from Walmart and big box stores that have no vested interest in our actual health. Meaning that pesticides, herbicides, um anything coming out of month, an agricultural company. That is based out of a pharmaceutical company. Is literally putting carcinogenic chemicals inside of our bodies. Breaking down our immune systems and then making us extremely sensitive to anything. That's going around in terms of bacterial viral infections and all sorts. So free health food. Is actually described as being cheaper. Than dealing with the aftermath health issues on a national level. So it's cheaper to keep everyone healthy through free food programs. Than to scare the hell out of them with food insecurity and job loss. Only to leave them eating cheap food from McDonald's, which you need a health passport to get.
Yeah, um, so I'm going to circle you back. I know you shared lots of ideas on where the city should be spending money. So just wrapping it up with this last kind of question here. Uh, talk, talking about large capital projects and capital investments. So looking at uh the the projects that are on the plan and on the tentative books. What are, what are those uh projects that you agree with, the ones that you disagree with? Um, and and are there any criteria that you think that we should be looking at before we approve these projects?
Um, so you you're speaking specifically to projects that were included in that. Plan that you.
Yeah, the capital, the capital improvement program plan. The SIP plan.
Your your question was, is there anything that I would uh, so. I would improve on absolutely everything and I could probably and I would love to have a further conversations with you about. Everything systematically that could be improved. Simply put, imagine I asked you to to develop this plan all on your own and I said, and we have. Fifty million dollars to work with. And then tomorrow I came back and you're like, I worked all night, I developed this plan and I said, I got some good news. You now have fifty billion dollars to work with. You would simultaneously be like, okay, well, this really changes everything. This is actually wh- what we now have available to us. Not just literally, because. We're printing our money. All money is being printed in this make believe uh debt uh account. That will never get paid off and is only like doubling exponentially. So, for example, our community creates our own local currency. We agree unanimously because currency is based on unanimous agreement and believability that this currency doesn't inflate. So this currency doesn't inflate and now we have our own local bank and we begin printing our own local currency. So as to ensure that all the local projects that we want get fin- financed. Then there's the idea that by outsourcing the intelligence of our community through uh. Um, city, city hall or town hall two point O technology, which is actually gathering. And outsourcing our community's intelligence. Every one of these initiatives can be upgraded to a huge extent. For example, affordable housing. If we were to utilize what I uh propose, we establish. As a new uh local council. And I would say in full collaboration with the transparency council being a world peace council. Meaning this world peace council uh ensures that everyone's voice is heard by hosting events which they can be heard from. And this council. Ensures that like a think tank, all of the solutions tested, all tested and tried solutions. That we're even considering. The consideration of. From around the world are considered, for example, um. Affordable housing. If we were to look at what our options actually are. We would very quickly come to terms with what is called. Large scale three D printing. A three D printer. Can print twenty houses per day. That means we could print free housing for everyone in Lethbridge. That's designed customized by the local community, uh the university engineers. So that these uh are actually sustainably produced. They are sustainably manufactured, meaning that they can be uh plant based. You can build houses out of hemp. This material, when built out of hemp as opposed to like oil synthetics, actually has a very different impact. On our brain. In other words, if you're wearing clothes that are made of oil and plastic. In the sun, it's like carrying around a a plastic water bottle and making sure to heat it up in the microwave. For an hour before you drink it, like our clothing, it's like our buildings. There is geometries that we can build that inspire. Uh, increased cognitive capacity. If you live in squares with low ceilings, you kind of feel like you're in jail. If you live in like dome shapes with. Uh, sky, uh, what are they called? Uh, sky roofs? You feel inspired. So we can change the way our housing, our commercial buildings, everything look. Simply by opening up to solutions that already exist and saying, well, what would we do if we could? So basically, every conversation is divided into two groups and this is the last I'll say. One is um. What should we do? Based upon. Having limited access to resources and solutions. Which is kind of what we're doing right now. And what would would we do if money wasn't an issue? Now, it doesn't mean that everyone has to immediately think like money isn't an issue. But at least we're identifying the solutions that we would apply if money was an issue so that we have a frame of reference. And that frame of reference is what open dialogue makes certain of.
Absolutely, certainly brought up a lot of, a lot of ideas today. So thank you so much for doing this interview, Michael. Uh, how can people get in touch with you?
Thank you, I'm really grateful for the opportunity and um. I I I will just want to say that what you're doing is really important and I hope only to assist you. Or help ensure that um. What you guys are doing and what what I've briefly just caught wind of uh. Is uh supported by the community. Dialogue is the the key to everything. How you can get ahold of me, I'm just, I've just launched my new website, which is kind of, I'm, I'm uh. I'm uh. Adding the information regarding my campaign today. At Michael Petrakis dot com. M I C H A E L P E T R A K I S dot com. Um, you can get ahold of me at Michael for city council. At protonmail dot com. And I also use Facebook as my main uh social uh media network. Which is, I think, offline right now, social media.
Yes, it is.
I'm not sure what's going on there, but interesting sequence of events. But yeah, th- those three are are the best. Also, five eight seven two five seven eight zero eight eight, if anybody would like to call me and set up a a meeting or anything. I'd be honored.
Well, awesome. Thank you so much, Michael. I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Hannah. Have a wonderful day. We'll talk to you soon.